Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the December 16th, 2020 Public Work Session for the Mawa Board of Education. Please note, due to the current government declared emergency, this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education will not be physically open to the public. The public may view the meeting and participate via Zoom. During the public portion of members of the public may also call into the meeting. During the public portion of this meeting, members of the public will be given the opportunity to participate either verbally or through the Q and A chat feature of Zoom. All participants must provide their name and address and are reminded to follow participation rules stipulated in Board Policy 0167. For members of the public who cannot participate at the time of the meeting, questions or comments may be sent in advance to the Board Secretary at boesecretary@mawa.k12 nj.us to be read into the official record of the meeting. Mr. Bleeker, could you please call the meeting to order?
Uh, yes, roll call, Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Dr. Morthe.
Here.
Ms. Akon.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
And Ms. Baron.
Here.
At a quick notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on December 16th, 2020 in the administrative offices 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Would everyone please rise for a salute to the flag? And Mr. De Silva, would you please lead us in this salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Agenda questions, please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Give a few moments for this. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Copeland.
And seeing only one participant in the meeting right now, and I'm just checking to see that I have nothing else, no communications came in through the BOE secretary email. Ms. Baron, you are okay whenever you're ready to close the meeting to the public at this time.
May I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Ms. Conoco. Dr. Fitz, good evening. Do you have a report for us this evening?
Dr. Fitz, you're muted.
Muted.
Okay, I think that's got it. Yes, I do have a report for the Board of Education. In light of all the things that are taking place, including the snow, I want to tell you about some of the positive things that's taking place in the district. The entire staff as well as students, they have been working extremely hard and they've been very conscientious about their about their work. As I move across the school district and get a chance to read bulletin boards, it's really, really exciting to see the students' work. They express themselves exceptionally well in writing. Their work informs us of their creativity and the kinds of things that they are thinking about. I noticed one youngster or several youngsters who did a poster and they it was a pull-down poster. You could see their face and then all you had to do is to push it up like a like an accordion and the mask would fit over the face. I think, isn't that creative? I'm just telling you, we can see the proof of our work that's been going on for the last 120 days. And it is good work. But now we're going to pause for a while, but that pause is going to give us a chance to continue our instruction through virtual learning as well as make preparation for the opening, the reopening of schools by making sure that our buildings will be in a condition to welcome the staff and the students back. So it's not lost time. It will be good time to be used to make the reopening very, very successful. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Bleeker, do you have a report for us?
Uh, yes, just one item to report on. You'll see an item under the BA Report section of the agenda for the 2021-2022 Budget Calendar. Uh, this was calendar that was sent to members of the board as part of the board packet for this evening's meeting. Uh, there's no action or resolution that's necessary for this calendar, but I did want to provide it. And it's a part of the CUSAC process that we go through that the board has provided a budget calendar for the upcoming year that describes and outlines a general overview of the process from start to finish. So that has been provided to you. If there are any questions, please don't ever hesitate to reach out to me and ask. Uh, that's the one item that I have here. The only, uh, and there were no amendments to the agenda from when it was released, so no need to read any items as I have at the past couple of meetings. The very last thing I have to say is for everybody have a very happy holiday season and a happy new year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fair, how about you? Do you have a report for us?
Of course I do. So, uh, the the first piece, um, I know that I shared with the board earlier today, the fall sports presentation, so I wanted to give a shout out to John Pascal, Mawa High School Principal, as well as Roger Pelletier, our Athletic Director, and all the fall coaches who took the time to put together the virtual version of our of our Fall Sports Awards Presentation. They record videos and announcing these awards. So, um, the presentation was released yesterday and it proves the adaptability and flexibility of our staff, holding on to important traditions, but making modifications along the way to ensure that those traditions remain. So I think it's important to highlight. The second piece is our mindfulness, resilience, and wellness classes. Students sent over 100-plus student-created cards to patients Guthrie Robert Packer Hospital in Sayer, Pennsylvania, on the COVID floor for the holidays. Uh, students in the Mawa High School's Interact Club, in conjunction with Indian Hills High School students in Interact and their sad students also participated in this very generous gesture. So I wanted to highlight that. Another big piece is our very own Mawa High School senior, Jess Tierski, is a published author. She published a children's book. If you have not read it yet, it's worth reading. It's titled Pandemic Makes Perfect. It's available on Amazon. It's a story that contains an exciting and positive plot that follows Zoe, a new big sister, as she attempts to teach her baby brother all about the world, all while navigating the COVID-19 pandemic. All are invited to attend Mawa Deca's Storytime with Jess Tierski as she reads her book live tomorrow on Mawa Deca's Instagram page at 7:00 PM. The Instagram handle is @mawadeca, D-E-C-A. So she will be reading live. It'll be great to end a potential snow day tomorrow with with that with that experience. So, um, I just wanted to highlight some great things that are happening amongst, you know, all of what's happening.
Great, thank you. Um, my report for this evening. Uh, Mr. John Pascal, Principal of Mawa High School, is proud to announce that a member of the class of 2021 has been selected as a winner of the College Board National African-American Recognition Program. Madison C. Lawrence is the recipient of this honor. The invitation for the College Board National Recognition Programs was extended to those students that score in the top 2.5% of PSAT-NMSQT test takers who identify as one or more of the following: African-American, Hispanic-American, Indigenous, or attended school in a rural area or from a small town. Participation in the College Board National Recognition Programs is completely free of charge and will enable students to highlight their outstanding educational achievements to top colleges and universities. So congratulations to Madison on this wonderful achievement. And there, I hope you can see that picture of Madison? Is that coming up? No?
No.
Oh, so paper doesn't, okay. Sorry, I had a beautiful picture of her. Second, Mr. John Pascal, Principal of the Mawa High School, is proud to announce that two members of the class of 2021 have been chosen as candidates in the competition for a special scholarship to be awarded through the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. Brendan E. Notar Francesco and Kruti C. Shaw are the recipients of this honor. UPS Scholarship Program awards scholarships to students planning to attend a foundation for independent higher learning affiliated four-year college. The UPS Foundation and National Merit Scholarships are awarded to 150 children of full-time employees and 30 awards are given to children of part-time employees of UPS and its subsidiaries. So congratulations to Brendan and Kruti on this wonderful achievement. And last but not least, I have a really, really feel-good story. Mason Duffy is a third grader at George Washington School and over the summer, Mason took it upon himself to start a charity project to help purchase bulletproof stab-proof vests for police canines. He started painting pallet flags in July to raise money. To date, he has painted 66 pallets with a little help from mom and his brothers and raised $4,600. The pallets he painted included American flags, Fire Lives Matter, and Police Lives Matter flags. On December 10th, Mason was honored at the Little Ferry Police Station for his first donation of $2,500 for their new canine unit. He will be meeting with the police chief, the canine handler, the mayor of Little Ferry, and other officers. This is a very big achievement. He was honored at the Mawa Town Council meeting a few weeks ago. He has been working hand-in-hand with Officer Rapp from Mawa, who has been assisting Mason in finding canines who are in need. So we could not be more proud of his efforts and are thankful for a wonderful community who supported him. And as, um, Mr. Bleeker said, I also want to echo your sentiments. I hope that everyone has very, very happy holidays, safe, happy holidays, and a wonderful new year. Next, Board Committee reports. Do we have any Board Committee reports this evening? Yes, Mr. Denise.
Policy has three policies on tonight's agenda for a first reading. Policy 7510, use of school facilities. This policy has been revised to include a statement that the board shall provide information and training on the school district's practices and procedures on school safety and security to organizations that operate youth programs that are not sponsored by the by the school district and use school district buildings before or after hours. The second one is Policy 8420, emergency and crisis situations. This policy has been revised to require that substitute employees be trained in instruction on school security drills, evacuation procedures, and emergency response protocols. And the last one is Policy 8461, procurement procedures for school nutrition programs. This policy has been revised to include minor revisions to be in compliance with the New Jersey Department of Agriculture Guidance on Procurement Procedures for School Nutrition Programs.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have any board member, Kim? Yes.
Kim, I, yeah. From Instruction and Curriculum, just wanted to update from our last meeting to a couple of things. Number one, we were sort of informed and reviewed the full remote plan that will be going into effect and felt very comfortable with the thoughtfulness and the approach that had gone behind that. There was also some review of the survey results that had come from teacher survey, student, and parents. And I would say overall, I think the survey results were very positive and demonstrated that, of course, there's always room for improvement, but overall, the district is doing a really great job at both hybrid model and the full remote model and just really the flexibility of approach. So kudos to the admin team. We also talked a little bit about CUSAC and about the strategic plan and that buildings are currently in the process of auditing themselves in terms of their goals and specific, you know, the overarching statements and then specific goals specific to each building. So that's what they're working on as well. I didn't know, Dr. Dettoro, do you have anything you want to talk about in terms of the full remote plan?
No, um, the the correspondence went out specific to really the justification of of that call. And, um, I know that the administrative team is sending, has sent out or will be sending out the schedule of moving forward. I know the elementary level will be keeping their AM/PM until Christmas holiday break and then following holiday break, there'll be an adjusted schedule. Obviously, our hope is to maintain a consistency instructionally for that that period of time and then come back and finish year strong. We felt like it was a logical time to take this opportunity to go remote. We felt like we, up until that point of when we sent the letter, we were at 65 days of in-school instruction and we were very grateful for that time. And we were, we're looking forward to a successful end of the school year. We're very, very grateful for the, for the, obviously, the dedication of our teachers, the patience and partnership of our of our parents and obviously the hard work of our of our students. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yep, that's my report, Kim. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Gallo.
I I just have a brief comment. Just prior to tonight's board meeting, the Finance Committee met with our outside auditors to review the draft audit report, the final of which will probably be a board resolution, I believe, in January, according to Kyle. Overall, again, an excellent report in terms of both the controls of our in our district and also our financial position. So a big thank you to Kyle and his staff for working through the pandemic and also for the team from our auditors who, you know, normally they're here and they're always looking for evidentiary documents and things. And in the pandemic, it's, it must have been an extraordinary difficult thing to get all that stuff to them. But Kyle's folks were able to get it and they were able to get everything they looked at that they asked for. And the finding is is that we're in good shape, we're in good hands, both from again, from a control and from a financial position standpoint.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, um, we have old business. May I have a motion to move on old business? Ms. Conoco, second by Dr. Morthe. Kyle, could you please take roll call?
Okay, um, roll call, Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Ms. Akon.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Now I'd like a motion to proceed on A through P. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Akon. Do we have any remarks from any board members on these items?
Uh, on P, uh, thank you to Mr. Hard for his generous donation.
Most definitely. Thank you. Um, okay, Mr. Bleeker, could you please take roll call on A through P?
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Ms. Akon.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Now I'd like to take new business personnel, A through M. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. Do we have any board member remarks, comments on any of these items? Way to go. Okay, Mr. Bleeker, could you please take roll call?
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Ms. Akon.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron, uh, if I may interject right here for the next resolution, Ms. Conoco had reached out to me and she would like to read this resolution and take the roll call on it as well. So Ms. Conoco, uh, if I may, turn the meeting over to you.
Yes. New Business Board Member Recognition. Whereas Kim Baron has served as a prominent member of the Mawa Township Board of Education from 2015 until 2020. And whereas Kim Baron has diligently served as president for five years and chaired the Executive Planning Committee and sat on the Instruction and Curriculum Special Education Committee, Community Relations Committee, and was a liaison for the New Jersey School Board Legislative and Mawa Access for All, Mawa Schools Foundation Liaison. And whereas Kim Baron served with great skill and dedication throughout her service on the board consistently, placed the welfare of our students first and foremost in her decisions. And whereas her service on the board has brought her the respect of the community, her colleagues on the board, the administrative staff, and the teaching and support staff, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, on behalf of the grateful community, publicly acknowledges and expresses its sincerest appreciation to Kim Baron for her outstanding contributions to the Mawa Township Public School District. Mr. Bleeker, please.
Um, before I I give roll call or any board member remarks. Uh, Dr. Morthe.
Um, so, um, from meeting at the post office, Kim, right? Which she reminds me, I was running for board office and I was standing outside the post office and I introduced myself and that's how we met many years ago to her encouraging me to run for the board and become a board member about five years ago and then working collaboratively on all the committees that we've served on. Our relationship has developed from acquaintances to colleagues to now good friends. We may not always agree, Kim and I, but we are never afraid to stand our ground. And though and through it all, we have become strong partners and advocates for our students. Wishing you all the best, truly hoping South Carolina really appreciates what they're going to get as Mawa will definitely miss you and your contribution to the schools. But I do hear that it's a paid position down there. So, um, I'd go for it, is what I'd say. And maybe New Jersey can take some tips from that. Listen, you will be dearly missed. It will certainly be strange to not have you join us as a colleague and as a friend, but we wish you all the best down in the South. Enjoy.
Uh, Mr. Copeland.
I just think it's important to recognize tonight the amount of time, Kim, that you've put into this board and this district over the last five years. The public may not realize this, but as president, you spend more time representing us and the district than any of the other board members do. And I think it's important that we recognize that and thank you for that. Personally, I wanted to thank you for your leadership, your friendship, and more most importantly for me, my your mentorship for me. I reached out to you short before I decided to throw my hat in the ring and you were gracious with your time, meeting L.A. Arte and Ramsey for a cup of coffee and encouraging me to to ultimately putting, you know, throwing my hat in the ring. So for that, I thank you. I wish you nothing but the best. Enjoy South Carolina.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Denise.
Yeah, Kim, we, uh, we started together that first year and I know I always remind you of that. When I, when I think back of your tenure, the thing that stands out to me most is that when the district would come under attack on either social media or other places, it was always you that used to defend the district. And and you did that not out of a sense of obligation. You probably did that more out of a sense of responsibility because you were the board president and and you felt it was your responsibility to defend the district. And, um, you were right about that. But the important thing is that you recognized that, that it was the responsibility of the board president and you you had the courage enough to do that, even realizing that by defending the the district on social media that you may yourself come under a personal attack. And and sometimes you did. But you had the courage enough to to stand up and and defend the district. And that that's what impressed me the most. And that's what great leaders do. And you definitely were a very great leader and you will certainly be missed. But more importantly, I think you set a very high bar. You set a standard for for presidents that come after you. And that that's a, that's a very, um, that's a legacy that you should be very proud of. And so I wish you and and Bill the best down in South Carolina. I'm very familiar with that area, as you know. That's been on my radar as well. So, uh, maybe we will become neighbors once again down there. And, uh, I wish you the best and enjoy your your time down there and and Bill also.
Thank you.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
I'm just picking up on something John said. I was thinking of it, the same thing along those lines is having grown up here, gone through the school system, having, you know, started a family here and and having come on in the past several years. You you certainly have set the gold standard for what a a president of the board should be. You didn't do this for your, you didn't do this to to help your kids get any advantages. You didn't do this to help your family or yourself personally. You did this for the love of of the town, the love of the students and the love of the district. On a on a personal level, it's, it's, you know, you you've, you've you've mentored me in the sense of, you know, you found my strengths. You knew what my strengths were and my weaknesses. It put me, you know, helped put me on the right boards and committees, rather. But you've done that for everyone here and and you've really made, you've made a board that that works well together. We, we, you know, to preeminent point, we don't always agree, but we we certainly have a level of respect for one another. And I think that that stems from your leadership and it comes from the top. So I thank you for that. We're going to miss you here in Mawa. We're going to miss you here on the board, but, uh, you're certainly entitled to leave and go and enjoy life in in warmer climates. So we wish you certainly the best.
Especially after today. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gallo.
Uh, Kim, um, I'm just so thankful for all the support you've given me personally and of course, all the support you've given to your your entire board. Um, and the most important thing that I've learned is that when we put students first in all our decision-making and and when we're in the vortex of chaos, if we put kids first, great things will happen and we'll be good on the other side. And your steadfast leadership and adherence to that principle has been so important in navigating the the board's direction over the last couple of years. I I thank you personally, but the things, the community who we represent, as John Faison would say, 27,000 people are on his shoulder. They're the ones who who have benefited from your leadership in a in a very tangible and important way. And future Mawa students will be the better for it. And, um, I, so long as we adhere to that principle of putting students first and putting their needs and interests and safety and learning and their creativity and all their potential first, that's what, that's how we can make a great school district. That's why we can be a great board. That's why we can attract great teachers to our district. And, um, you you've contributed mightily to that undertaking. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Akon.
Yes, well, I think pretty much everything has been said, but I would like to personally thank Kim for her five years of service and for all the time that you did put in behind. and for all the time that you did put in behind the scenes. Oh, six, six years, sorry. And I wish you the best. We'll miss you. And thanks for keeping our board as a cohesive board. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. De Silva.
So I'm going to reserve my candid comments for such time as we are able to have a few adult beverages. But I publicly some of the things that I'll miss, you know, it's kind of been said already that, you know, we don't always agree, right? And that's, that's a good thing. And you definitely brought some diverse views to the conversation, which I think has made us all stronger and better. You know, just different, different ways of looking at things that, you know, just things that wouldn't have occurred to me and like I said, really strengthens the conversation. I appreciate your steady hand in leadership. You know, it's, we all know being on a board like this is a thankless job. Being board president doubles that at least. That nobody really realizes the time required to be president and how many, you know, the demands that are, that are put on you and the time that you actually spend doing the job. Between, you know, just being on call, like, you know, last week, we got Thursday night at seven o'clock. We've got a phone call, hey, can you be at central office tomorrow morning? The answer is yes. And and it's always yes, you know, no matter what's going on. And, you know, a lot of people don't realize that. So I appreciate your, the time that you put in along with us and your availability and your candor. And, you know, it's been a privilege and an honor to serve on executive council with you and on this board as a, as a whole. So.
Thank you.
All the, all the luck in the world down in South Carolina. You know, definitely time for a little slower pace, but it's a beautiful part of the country to, to spend some time in and I'm sure you'll enjoy it. So good luck and enjoy.
Thank you very much. Everyone, those sentiments were very, very beautiful.
I, I think Ms. Ms. Conoco wants to jump in briefly, real quick.
And and mine is not a goodbye to my sister from another mother. But you will be so greatly missed. We would, we would definitely butt heads. We would agree to disagree. And as has been said, it made both of us stronger and with everyone else on the board. It it made our perspective much broader to the benefit of us as individuals as well as to the district and everyone with whom we work. And we have been blessed with you leading and we're going to miss you. We're going to miss you. I won't see you every two weeks. Won't see you at the gym either. Those are tears for another day.
I'm going to miss everyone very much. I wrote down a little something that I'd like to say.
Kim, can I say something before you make your statement?
Oh, sure.
I think it's important that, you know, we as central office also share your value to us. I think, you know, Mr. Denise had mentioned the word legacy. I think what you, under your leadership, have brought, you know, you're hearing words like cohesion. And what has occurred here is a mutual trust and partnership that exists that is, that makes us such a great team. And you should be really proud of yourself for instilling that in this cohort. Because you do, you really do leave behind a legacy regardless of our position at central office or any of our position on the Board of Ed. What has occurred is we now have a shared understanding and a shared care of what it means to do right by every single kid and to do right by each other. And I think that's, that's something that I, and I, I know I speak on behalf of central office. We all thank you for, because while we're, we're in the daily grind, but we know that we have the support of you as well as the Board of Ed. That means a great deal to us. So thank you. And again, we all have different perspectives, but there's still the underlying trust that we can share our perspectives and still move forward doing right. So thank you. I know I don't always showcase my care because that's just who I am, unfortunately. I hope that this is my way of showing to you that you, you mean a great, great deal to this organization. Thank you.
Means a lot, Dennis. Thank you very, very much.
There's PD for you, Dennis.
I know.
So I actually had to write it down so I wouldn't remember everything I wanted to say. So so first of all, I want to thank the community for putting their faith in me by electing me to serve two terms on the Board of Education. So thank you very much. Next, I'd like to recognize the entire central office staff. Dr. Dettoro, Dennis Fair, Lisa Rizzo and Dr. Fitz. Thank you so much for the respect that you give the board and and just echoing your sentiments, Dennis. I think it's, we're working very well together and we may not all agree, but at least we can be respectful of each other. And I think that's what I'm most proud of. I'd like to keep, thank Mr. Bleecker. Thank you, Kyle, for keeping me on track. And I'd like to thank Nancy Ripetti for being the consummate liaison between the superintendent and myself and the board. And also want to give a shout out to Carlos Rosa, Ross, Carlos Rosa for, for helping this non-tech savvy board member through some issues that we had. Third, it's my pleasure to recognize and thank the entire no. Yes, now I'd like to thank the entire administrative staff for their commitment to our district and our students and for their ability to always keep the board in the loop with frank and honest conversations, even when opinions might differ. So thank you very much for that. So I can't say enough about our support, our teachers and support staff. You are the heart and soul of our district and the sacrifices you make for our students do not go unnoticed. Thank you for your, thank you so much for your service. And lastly, I want to thank my fellow board members. It's been a heck of a, heck of a sexy, six-year journey and I'm honored to have served beside each and every one of you. Each and every one of you are phenomenal human beings who dedicate themselves every day to the betterment of our district and the educational and emotional well-being of our students. I am proud and not only, not only calling you my colleagues, but to also call you my friends. You are strong, passionate, respectful individuals who helped me to become a better leader and a better human being. And for that, I am truly grateful. Although it may be hard to believe, I will truly miss being a part of this organization. But I know that it's in great hands. And I wrote, Mr. Gallo, my last comments were always remember, it's all about the kids. So thank you, everyone, so very much. I will truly, truly miss each and every one of you.
Kim.
Yes.
We, and it's hard, I have it here. We had, with Kyle's help, we contacted the architect and we had a rendition of the steam building, which was a monumental accomplishment during your tenure. So prepared for you so that you can hang it in your office, in your new home.
Thank you.
In your, of one of your accomplishments and all the lives of the children that go in and out of that building, who you have affected and will affect in the years to come.
Thank you very much. And I also want to let you all know, Mr. Bleecker stopped by the other day and gave me this beautiful glass bowl that says, "To honor your service to education, thank you for your dedication to our students and staff." And it says, "Kim Barron, six years of dedicated service." So thank you, Mr. Bleecker, for going out in the cold. Personally, to me, I really appreciate it. And so this is the last thing. Thank you so very much. Okay, probably, I wish I had a tissue. I forgot.
Ms. Baron, I just, as a, for a matter of fact, I just need a motion on resolution, I'm sorry, item number seventeen I. Mr. Gallo and Ms. Conoco.
And I have to vote on this too?
Yeah.
Vote no.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Resounding yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
And last but not least, Ms. Baron.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, public questions or comments. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. May I have a motion to open to the public for comments? Mr. De Silva, second by Ms. Conoco.
Again, as earlier, I'm looking at our list of attendees. I see nothing coming in, Ms. Baron. Nothing was submitted to me in advance either. For this portion of the meeting, you are okay to close the meeting.
Okay, I have a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Gallo. Okay, may I have a motion now to recess to executive session? Ms. Dr. Morthee, second by Mr. Copeland. And this is for personal matters and confidential student matters.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to end the recording of the meeting. The attendees that we do have, I'm going to remove from the room. So the board administration are can conduct the executive session.